Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Here.
Melton is absent. Palermo.
Here.
And Festerson is absent.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing by comments by myself. In words of my good friend, God bless the Soul Ridge Pauls, let's have a good meeting and welcome.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone, welcome. Thank you for being here for this week's city council meeting. We'd love to hear you get up and talk about any agenda item you choose, and we want to remind you to silence all electronic devices so that we can maintain decorum in the chambers. Madam Clerk.
Items six through eight can be considered together for Emmanuel Lakeside located southeast of 177th and Francis Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district in our sixth district. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item eight, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item Six. We'll take proponents first.
Good afternoon. Jeff Lake here with SRE Development on behalf of the Emmanuel team here. What we have in front of you is a single-family subdivision on the Lakeside, Emmanuel Lakeside campus comprised of about 14 acres, 46 single-family homes, and a clubhouse amenity for those homes. And with that, I'd be here to answer any questions you might have on these agenda items.
Okay. If you could repeat your address, please.
Sure. I'm sorry, 21008 Cumberland Drive.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item six through eight are approved, six to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for the Northeast Joint Use Facility Two located southeast of 20th and Ogden Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item Number Seven. Proponents, please. Oh, sorry. Number nine. Let me say that again, public hearing and vote on Agenda Item Number Nine. Proponents, please. Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, six to zero. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Warren Place located northeast of 42nd and L Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be it communication and support.
Public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 10. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Trevor Vaschner with Thompson, Dresen &amp; Dornar, 10836 Old Mill Road. I'm here representing the applicant Faithful Realty for the preliminary and final plat of Warren Place. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Is it Tom? Could I have you come back down for a second? Oh, Trevor. Okay. Trevor, welcome. I looked through the application. Can you tell me what's going to be here? Are you allowed to say yet? If not, that's fine.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say yet, so I better not.
We'll keep my constituents guessing. Fair enough. I looked through the plans. It looks really nice.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for being here, Trevor.
Yeah.
No other opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Row. Oh, breaker headlight.
Yeah.
Application that is a coffee shop, so if that's any help to you.
I gathered that, and I even did some research to find out what company, but I could not. So Trevor's going to hold that secret near and dear. Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, six to zero. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone property located at 13545 Miami Street from R3 District to R4 District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item Number 11. Proponents? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, six to zero. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1802 Sailor Street from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 12. Are there any proponents? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, six to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located at 6060 Northwest Radio Highway from R7 District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 13. Proponents, please.
Greg Maylock, I'm the owner of the property, and I'm at 965 South 193rd Court, Elkhorn, Nebraska. And I don't have quite a use for it right now, but I'm rezoning it, you know, according to master plan.
Okay. Sounds good. Stick around if we have any questions. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing none? Is there any opponents? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed?
Motion approved.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, six to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 13705 Corby Street from R3 District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 14. Proponents, please. Seeing none? Is there any opponents? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, six to zero. Item 15, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1728 Sailor Street from GI District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 15. Are there any proponents? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, six to zero. Items 16 and 17 can be considered together for property located at 3911 L Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be it communication and opposition. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone this property from GC District to R5 District. Item 17, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 16? Are there any? 19? 16? Oh, 16 and 17. The public hearing and vote is today on 16 and 17. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Nope. Guess not. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 16 and 17 are approved, six to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve the MH Landing Lot Five Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3321 South 72nd Street in amount up to $390,000.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 18. See Mr. Seaton's here from the city. Please proceed.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This TIF project is the MH Landing Lot Five project. Property is located near 72nd and Grover on a site that had previously been occupied by the Ramada Inn Convention Center and Cocoa Key Water Park, which has since been demolished and has since been replatted into six lot. You may recall that one of the lots, Lot Four near Grover, has already been through the process for TIF approval for a hotel. The same owner is now looking at Lot Five to do a one-story office building with basement and some storage, about 5,660 square feet of building area. This will be the headquarters for Merrick Hospitality, which owns two adjacent hotels, and they also own a few other hotels in the Omaha market. Total project investment is approximately $2,689,000. They are requesting $390,000 in TIF support. Project's been reviewed and approved by the City TIF Committee and Planning Board. It's an appropriate use for the area, meets the criteria of our TIF program, and we ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you for that. Are there any other proponents for Agenda Item 18?
Bob Griffith, 11440 West Monroe here on behalf of the applicant, VMM Properties. Just here to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none?
Sorry, did you call for a opponent?
I'm going to.
I can't quite hear you.
Okay. Are there any other opponents? Opponents? First call.
I can hear everybody else. I'm sorry, I just can't hear the YouTube.
Probably over there.
Makes a difference. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'm an ever-opponent in most cases to tax increment financing for many reasons that I've said before. Now, I remember this property being out there in an entertainment complex, also a convention complex, but I find it kind of curious that the discussions for this were going on way back in March or earlier. So we probably already knew it was a done deal. So why do we waste taxpayer dollars on a public hearing on it if it's already signed, sealed, and delivered, and oh my gosh, the building is already gone? It's been gone for a while. What good does it do to have a public hearing? We've already paid for some of that unless the private corporation, which is going to supply hotels of the area, unless they already coughed up the money out of their own pocket. But we don't know that. It hasn't been explained. And that brings to mind some of the other projects around town where all of a sudden the property is vacant, it runs down for a year or two, then all of a sudden there's a hearing, but the property's gone, and they get TIF. Well, the people that abandoned the hotel that was there, did they walk away from an obligation money-wise? Did that cost the taxpayers? What about the taxpayers that live in the area of this TIF application? There may be a few residences not very far from there. Their property taxes are not going to go up because this company, this private corporation isn't, got TIF break for 15 years, going on 20 or 25. Will they stay in Omaha and actually pay off their loan or start paying the higher property taxes 15, 20, 25 years from now? But the citizens that have a residence there, and maybe the small businesses, some of those restaurants, aren't they going to pay higher property taxes because of this development? But they don't get a break either? You know, there's a lot of this that's not, doesn't sound fair, so please correct me and explain it better, maybe put it in writing to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. I do have a light. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Don, if I could ask you a few questions, please?
Certainly. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning.
Thank you. Just for our audience and also just for purposes of knowledge, please give us a summary of the benefits of TIF.
Well, we use TIF to try to increase or stimulate economic redevelopment of sites in older parts of Omaha. Out toward 72nd Street, this does qualify and is in a CRA, but it's a little newer for older parts of Omaha. But, you know, the premise I'm hearing is that because these people will have to pay no tax on the increased value they're adding to the property, it will somehow cause neighbors to have to pay more taxes. It doesn't work that way. And the property, regardless of who owns it, will be here for well over the 15-year period of the TIF. So after 15 years, the added value on this property will come back to the taxpayer as a much higher return on the investment. It's a way we get higher property values and ultimately build our tax base. It's, you know, the TIF program's been going on, I don't know, 25, 30 years? It's almost like a conveyor belt where the properties that were approved 15 years ago are now coming online today. And in many cases, it retires early, so maybe 10, 12 years ago. And we're really reaping the rewards of the TIF program quite nicely.
Great. Now, you mentioned that this is going to fall under the community development law. And so with that being said, the following questions I have. What are the number, maybe you may not be able to answer this question, perhaps this is more to the owner, but what will be the number of jobs from a pre-construction period to a post-construction period?
It's in the staff report in your packets. I don't have notes in front of me. It's also in the application that the applicant provided. It's also in your packets and online. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me at the moment. I want to say that the office use itself was maybe six or seven jobs. Thank you.
So we have 150 during the construction period?
Apparently, it's 25 during the construction period. It'd be temporary construction jobs.
And then 150 after?
25, sorry, if you don't mind, I just have 25 full-time employees for the Marriott Hospitality, which will be immediate. And then it says up to 150 full-time employees in, over the next two years.
This is the headquarters for his hotel operations, and I think there's maybe five, six, seven hotels he's operating in the metro area.
Okay. And was there any neighborhood outreach?
I defer to the applicant to provide that information. His representative is here. We do encourage at our pre-application hearing, please reach out to the neighborhood associations and to any immediate neighbors. I would note that in terms of single-family residential neighbors, they're kind of lacking in this area, but we do encourage outreach to the neighborhood associations. Would you care to hear from the applicant on their outreach efforts?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. As Don said, since there was not an immediate surrounding single-family community, I don't believe there was a neighborhood outreach. This is part, as Don alluded to, is a larger phase project, Phase Four, or I should say Phase One being Lot Four, which has been through the system and through the approval process. And that might answer some questions as to why the building has been since demolished. That was due to the first larger portion of the Phase One, and this is a smaller second phase. I want to quickly adjust your jobs question because Don's correct, 25 initially, both permanent, full-time positions, and then 25 construction jobs. And this does represent a significant commitment from the applicant to the Omaha community in that his corporate and the company's corporate headquarters would move here. And over the next two years, up to 150 positions, that includes that entire network of hotels that they do manage and work with would filter in. So that's a significant positive as part of this TIF program.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Don, I know you don't have to get up, but I know the work you've put into this. And just by way of history, I know Councilmember Palermo, I believe, worked up at the hotel there on 72nd Grover back when he was not getting in trouble as a young youth in Omaha. I know this borders, where this is at, it's in my district. And as Don, you know, you got Westgate on the west side, and the south end of Grover is Councilmember Palermo's district. I know, in fact, last Friday, I was up in Westgate at a neighborhood event, and in talking to folks up there, I never heard anything about this project at all. And as we know, there's commercial, there's apartments from 72nd to 60th and Grover, and this is a bookend anchor of, I guess you could say, the southwest tip of Exarben, and we're Baxter Arena and all that great development is. So this is just another piece that preceded me in all the development that's happened there. And I know that the TIF process, it goes through a process with the city, you just don't dole out TIF dollars. And that area up there, I know, was an eyesore for many years. And as I've stated before, and I'll state here in support of this here today, that it's a great development going there, and I'm looking forward to this, what that brings to the area on 72nd with the interstate there on Westgate on the west side, as I said. It's going to be a great anchor there just to continue the great work the city's done in the development in that area. So I'll certainly look to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. Seeing no other lights? Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson.
Yes.
Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, six to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve the Shirley Tyree Theater Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2401 North 24th Street in amount up to $354,672.
The public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 19.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, City, Omaha City Planning. This project, the Shirley Tyree Theater TIF project, is a historic building rehab. The building is located at 2401 North 24th Street. It's about a block south of Lake and 24th. Building's been vacant for about three years. I think it was most recently used as a preschool. The building is going to be thoroughly rehabilitated, and a new addition will be added to the east end of the building, about 4,300 square feet. The project is going to serve as a, here's the building as it looks today, with the addition would be on, the east is on the far back end of the building in this picture. Project will serve as a black box theater venue with flexible performance space. There'll be a ticket office, scene shop, dressing rooms, rehearsal space. Project's also located in an extremely blighted area, so we're looking at a 20-year TIF term. Developers RH Land Management LLC. The investment in North Omaha in this instance is just shy of $21 million. The TIF request is for $354,672. Project meets the required criteria of our TIF program. There's a couple of renderings also. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. Think it's an exciting addition to North 24th Street, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents for Agenda Item 19?
Good afternoon. Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street on behalf of the applicant. Don did a good job of outlining the specifics of the TIF, so I just want to get up here and commend the union. A lot of the folks are here today, Brigitte McQueen, Denise Chapman, and I know a lot of other supporters of the union for bringing this into existence. It's a good needed use of TIF, given the nonprofit nature of the union and of the applicant and the project itself. You know, Brigitte, Denise, and others have done a wonderful job with the union. This will be a natural expansion of their activities, allow them to expand from a maximum of 40 in capacity for the performing arts in the current union to around 90 once this project is completed. We think it's a wonderful addition to that corridor. They plan to be open by next spring, hopefully. And certainly, we appreciate your consideration or happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Terry Sanders, 4115 North 22nd Street in Omaha. I am also the publisher of the Omaha Star newspaper, oldest black newspaper in the state of Nebraska, and a neighbor to the union and what will soon be the Black Box Theater. And I would like to speak in high support of this project. It will add to the arts that exist in our community, enhance it, and also add to the economic development of the area, which we all know needs help. So I am a proponent, and I highly recommend that you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hello. My name is Peggy Jones. My address is 6787 Bedford Avenue, Omaha. I'm just going to read this. As a citizen, voter, taxpayer, playwright, and educator, I strongly endorse the passage of this resolution. In my many experiences with them, the staff of the Union of Contemporary Arts has repeatedly offered exceptional arts programming, especially in the performing arts. They have been responsible, passionate stewards of funding received, utilizing appropriate due diligence. As a voting taxpayer, I would be delighted to see this investment of public monies. The Shirley Tyree Theater, which is named in honor of an exceptional Omahian, would be a welcome addition to serving both those in the area and the larger Omaha community. It would be a space to give wonderful opportunities to create art, increasing opportunities to enrich the lives of youth and adults, including on the stage, in the audience, as well as original creators of artwork. I strongly endorse the passage of this resolution, which would add to the cultural and historical quality of life for all Omahians, especially those living in the proximity of the Shirley Tyree Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Kim Whiteside, 1524 Coming Street in Omaha, Nebraska, 68102. Mr. President and members of the council, I am here to support item 19. I am a local playwright. Omaha has always been home. And one of the most inspiring events of my life was during an audition at the Union for Contemporary Art. I saw people from the North Omaha community who, through their own self-admission, would never have thought to audition for a play because it was in their community they came. Not all were brilliant, but some of them were. And many of those who have taken their first steps into theater from North Omaha have gone on to great careers in the theater throughout Omaha and beyond. As a city, we are supporting so many- As a city, we are supporting so many great endeavors for housing, Affordable Housing Action Plan, Urban Core Plan, Seventy-five North, just to name a few, so that our families have dwelling spaces. Members of the council, our artistic spirits, our word arts, our spoken culture, our stories and creative souls also need dwelling spaces. That's why I support our continued efforts in creating these spaces for our arts to live as well. And I am in favor of the development of the Shirley Tyree Theater as one of those spaces. So that in the future, in the North Omaha community, we have dialogue that proceeds as follows. Hey, what are you doing today? Well, there's this audition at the Tyree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
My name is Harry Urie, and I represent the Afro Academy of Dramatic Arts Revisited of 1626 Luthard Street here in Omaha. I first want to say that I had started the first black theater here in Omaha some year, many years ago, called the Afro Academy of Dramatic Arts. And I'd like to just go over a few things first before I preface my support for the Kathy Tyree Black Box Theater. I was born black and gifted in the rich cultural tradition of North Omaha. I want to preface my comments of support for the proposed Kathy Tyree Black Box Theater by saying that black theater, dramatic art, and music presentation and appreciation has always been a major part of my family's creative life experience. I am the second of four sons, Albert Junior, myself, Harry, my brother Minister Darryl, and my other brother Minister Tyrone Urie, who were born to our skilled laborer butcher father, Mr. Albert A. Urie Senior, who worked for Cuddy Hee and Wilson's Packing House in South Omaha. My dear compassionate community, human, and civil rights activist mother, Ms. Dorothy Jane Urie, who had initially worked as a day-by-day housekeeper in the more affluent Jewish and white suburban homes in West Omaha. She also worked as a late-night custodial worker, mopping floors and cleaning restrooms, et cetera, at many of the Omaha cold storage offices and manufacturing textile buildings around Jabber's Canyon area, which is now often referred to the riverfront development market areas. We then lived in a small cold and cement-brick black contractor-built home at 2521 Grant Street, just about three or five or four blocks from the proposed Kathy Tyree location. To help my father make ends meet for our family, my mother later acquired a job, a job as a test tube and bottle washer, and then was promoted as a lab technician for the University of Nebraska Medical Center and Laboratory, under the direction and leadership of Robert Prokop. Upon her vision and the encouragement of my dad and her friends, Ms. Bertha Callaway, Ms. Mildred Brown, Ms. Sarah Roundtree, Ms. Wayne, Mrs. Wynne Peterson, Jesuit John Markku, Attorney Wilbur Phillips, Mr. and Mrs. Denny, and Jan Holland, Mr. and Mrs. Rodney Weed and Angie Weed and others, she applied and was hired as the first black paralegal in the state of Nebraska. She then successfully worked for Legal Aid Society of Nebraska, handling and winning volumes of social security disability cases. There she had the highest logs of winning and successful adjudicated cases in the history of the legal aid system there. From about 1947 through 1967, the year I graduated from Central High School, and then this major industry that supported most of the black families in North Omaha, which was the meatpacking industry, it shut down and closed because the city of Omaha did not choose at that time to build and implement a major waste, water waste treatment and sewer plant. My father, however, continued to work at smaller meatpacking processing companies until he retired around 1988. My father was from New York, the city, the sub-city of Harlem and Nyack, New York. He had a deep love for jazz and good music creation and improvisation. And they both loved, my mother and father, both loved screen film, dramatic, and performing arts. My grandmother had worked as a show dancer off Broadway and with the Vaudeville Folies, and also at the Cotton Club in Harlem. My dad met my mother at the Jimmy Jew Dreamland Ballroom at 24th and Grant Street, only a stone's throw or a couple of blocks just south of the proposed Kathy Tyree Black Theater site. During one of his furloughs to the USO Omaha from his Army Air Corps location at the Harvard Airfield in Hastings, Nebraska, where bombs were made and where aircraft bombers training and deployment was taught and implemented, my father met and fell in love with my mother within the rich black music and cultural dramatic heritage of the black and African-American traditions and creative people who lived and strove to succeed within the red line areas and because of the discriminatory housing and social, political, and economic practices imposed on blacks and disenfranchised people who live within the so-called near-north side. I often wondered why they called that near-north side. Were black folks too near to white folks then? I remember as a young eight- or nine-year-old boy that my dad and mom and my brothers, we participated in a nonviolent demonstration called a pray-in here at City Hall, so that there could be blacks and people of color, so they would have the opportunity to even work here. As you recall, and I'm just giving a little history, but it's very significant, there was a time that blacks and other people of color did not work for the city of Omaha. They couldn't work here. They couldn't be represented on the payrolls or any other ways in which it was, which income was provided. During the time that my father would come home after working at the popping house...
Sir, not to interrupt you, but if you can wrap it up a little bit, I love the history...
Well, it's very germane. It's very significant.
Do you have it written out that you could present it to the clerk?
No, I don't. I would rather read it here because it's very important.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Okay, I'll try to wrap it up as quickly as I can, but it is very germane and relevant to the subject. And I think I'm one of the strongest proponents based upon my historical background for the Kathy Tyree Theater.
I appreciate that, but wrap it up.
But I'll wrap it up. But I wanted to just say, my family had a music and cultural dramatic background, and they instilled that in us as children. We went on and participated with the Omaha World Hurd and City of Omaha Showwagon, which was very, very popular in the 1960s. Thus, from there, we created the Afro Academy of Dramatic Arts. But I would like to say, we created it from a small grant from Leonard Thiessen of the Nebraska Art Council, only $1,000 at that time in 1969. And subsequently, we received other funding from the National Endowment of the Arts Expansion Arts Program. But we never received any funding that would have sustained a cultural program that would have made a difference over the last 50 years. We're pleased that this is happening now. I just want to say this one thing before I close, and I'll wrap it up. I won't read everything that I have here, but I would like to submit it...
I would love to read it.
...post facto as a entry into the record for the city council and for other people to respond to and hear, because I think it's very important. But one of the things I wanted to say, and this is very important, and let me find it. Okay, we, okay, let me find it here. I'm coming up on it, I'm just viewing...
Go to that very last page.
I'm going there.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Urie is considered an elder of the history of the city.
I get it, but we have a meeting here to...
Yes, I understand.
And I would love to get to the point where we could vote for this.
And with due respect, but one of the things I wanted to say real quickly, and I'll say it, and I'll be done with it. My only concern, as an extension of the Union for Contemporary Arts, that it will truly represent and recognize the true indigenous history of North Omaha community, its historical heritage, its black culture and social demographic struggles with economic, political red line constraints that have long time adversely affected the area, the absolute need to preserve and protect and sustain the great and preponderance of black cultural, music, dramatic, fine art, creative writing, historical and artistic creation, and enduring cultural iconic legacies. However, I will speak, and I have spoken as a proponent, I just want to say that that black theater, one of the things about black theater, it is our need to tell our black experience in America and the truth of the remaining mental, psychological vestiges of adverse slavery and historical and contemporary racism in America during varying contiguous times and its long and systemic patterns of history. Black theater is and always has been a peculiar and unique theatrical genre and performances and presentational art form. Unlike many European...
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
...and Caucasian theatrical, black theater is often caustic, provocative, sometimes bitter, angry.
What we're going to do is we're going to help you email that to the clerk and make it part of the record. I really appreciate you being here.
I wish to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today, and I encourage you unequivocally to support the development and sustainment and augmentation of the Kathy Tyree Black Box Theater on 24th and Willis. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This has our email address on there, you can email those comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name is Denise Chapman, I'm at 2437 Mary Street, and I am the producing artistic director of Theater at the Union for Contemporary Arts, and this is our new theater home that we are very, very excited about. So just, just kind of a very quick overview, we have been able to work with so many new emerging artists here in Omaha. We've had several artists who have worked with us in their gap years of college, who are now touring on Broadway and doing Broadway tours. We have a young man who spent some time with us, who is now working with the Black Theater Coalition in New York. And we are ever so excited to be able to provide more of these opportunities, not only for all of our emerging artists here in Omaha, but also for all of our well-seasoned artists who may have been overlooked in major institutions in the past. So that is the work that we are doing. We're very excited to be doing that work. We have a dedication to exploring the diversity within the African diaspora and having conversations that lead us to a deeper and better understanding of the human condition and allow us all to maybe see each other a little bit better and have a deeper understanding of who we are and maybe make the world just a little bit of a better place. Thank you so much for your consideration, and I'm speaking in, in high hopes that this goes through. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Are there any other proponents? Seeing no proponents, so we'll go to opponents.
I'm a proponent.
Okay.
Believe it or not, I'm a proponent.
Well, I believe you.
I am a proponent.
So let me back up.
I can't hear you, but you can hear me. Thank you, sir. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm in favor of this because it's due time. There's theaters all over this town. Bellevue Little Theater, there's a theater over here, Children's Museum, there's a theater in Benson that, by the way, has probably gotten a break a number of times, and now it's getting a complete remake with the help of TIF. But what I, what I am opposed here is the people that have businesses in the area of this theater and have residences in the area, can we assure them that their property taxes are not going up because of it? Beginning now, but this nonprofit won't pay until 15 years ago. That's what I'm against. I think he skipped over the issue. The issue is, prove to us, the taxpayers that live in these areas, that TIF does not raise my property taxes starting from day one. When it says city's participation, that means me, because you guys are handing out the money or the breaks. Unfortunately, North Omaha really has not got that much, and it is time. I'm going to talk about my father. It's, I know it's not a presentation, and we broke the rules here, so we're going to break them again for me. Thank you. Thank you for being kinder and gentler with a man that wanted to speak his mind. That's what this is for. I grew up in a not-so-rich family. My father was a railroader, nationalized in Railroad Two. His father was a well-dealer in Mills County, Iowa. They worked and laughed and played with people of all colors. Yeah, there were some fights maybe on the extra gangs for the railroad, too. I had aunts and uncles that played music during the Depression days and afterwards with all kinds of people. I had a friend until recent from Generations Group here in Omaha that used to play music in North Omaha. They had a lot of fun with people, people in North Omaha, and would ask them, well, can we come down to South Omaha or wherever you're playing and join your group? And they did, and they had fun. And we had fun talking about it. I also remember Ted Mack's Original Amundar Hour. A lot of black comedy. It's extremely funny, extremely entertaining, not like the bull that is on televisions today. Well, that's from white people, too, but none of it's very funny. None of it's very clean anymore. One of my favorites was Open the Door, Richard. That gentleman might know that. One of the funniest things I ever saw. A man with a ladder made a hilarious, long comedic sketch, had you rolling in the aisle. I remember county fairs where people would get up, all colors, and have fun and laugh. So it is time for TIF in places, but not at the expense of some people that maybe can't afford it. I can't afford, well, I'm not going to be here in 15 years, but I'll probably have to sell my house because, oh my God, my taxes, my valuation's up $30,000 last year, $46,000 this year. Part of it is because you're giving money away to people that already have the money to do these projects. Seventy-second Street, the item just before, that's obviously a commercial, private corporation that has the money, but they got the break. the money, but they got the break. This theater may not happen without it. So, this is illegal and a very welcome TIF project. That's what it's supposed to be. So, stop with all the other stuff, cut out some of the programs and some of the giveaways to nonprofits, and lower my taxes so I don't have to move to Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Starr was a proponent, and we're gonna stay with the proponents. Are there any other proponents for Agenda Item 19?
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson de Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. I had decided a few months back or a year that I wasn't gonna support any more black programs like arts or the Black Museum. But I know Mr. Urie. I know when he started the Black Museum, or excuse me, his academy on 30th and Cummings when we was kids, and he worked really hard before Mr. Beasley. So, I said I will support him in this, but I believe that our money could be spent in better places. But I know if he gets behind it, it's gonna be a successful project. But I was really upset with Mr. Preston Love and the rest of them about that money going into the Black Museum, and we having problems on top and not dealing with the people under the ground. But I know Mr. Urie and Mrs. Blackburn, the Blackburn Center, and those folks, all working, his mom was very good scholars for herself as young kids, and so was Mr. Kavanoff family, and who sold me half the corner of 30th and Ames when I grew up, and Joe Friend, who, his programs, I was telling the young lady earlier, in 1963, I started with third grade here in Omaha. In 1972, we had not one shooting in our school, not one. So, I understand some of the programs, but I know he's gonna do a good job. But I didn't come here on this issue. I was just having to walk into this particular project. But I do feel that we should look into his program. Mr. Beasley done a wonderful job. I think he will do as well. But I'm not gonna study and support any more money going to the Black Museum for nonsense, and we gotta have work done on top.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any oponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Wow, with all the powerful testimony that we've just received today on this, I have no doubt in my mind that this is definitely going to be an economic value to North Omaha, to Omaha as a whole. I am very confident that our community will be uplifted. The opportunities to explore art, creative art, is definitely long overdue, specifically there at 24th or the area of 24th and Lake. Again, not, no doubt in my mind, this will be very helpful. It definitely will restore some of the hopelessness that our community has encountered for decades, and I am very happy about this new venture. I would like to thank Mr. Urie for bringing and coming forth coming today and really telling us the historical significance of what the jazz value is to our community. That was really important. Many people may not know the historical significance for that, but I really want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule, coming forth and sharing that knowledge and experience with us. Now, we're back to the resolution here which supports TIF. And as District Two representative, I also have a responsibility to other residents to talk about things that the community is asking questions on. I would be remiss if I did not ask those questions. So, if I could have Don and the owner come to the mic and answer some of the questions that the community is asking, I would greatly appreciate that. All right, we're back to community law. Looking for neighborhood outreach. Can anyone tell me the names of the neighborhood associations touching North 24th Street that perhaps we came in contact with, obviously to tell us about this great, exciting new venture?
Sure. And I actually, I think Bridget, or Brigitte McQueen would be better suited to talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
I wasn't involved in it, so I will excuse myself.
Hi, good afternoon. Brigitte McQueen, 4916 Miami Street. I'm the founder and executive director of the Union for Contemporary Art. Thank you for your consideration of this resolution. Councilmember Johnson, we did a town hall meeting in the fall of last year that we sent postcards out to residents living in 68111, 68112, and I believe 68110, letting them know about the project that was coming and about the meeting that we held to discuss the project. We had about 50-ish members of the community show at that meeting.
Okay. And can you kind of share with the public your plans to engage, to continue to engage with residents immediately in that area that you serve?
Of course. So, with everything that we do at the Union, we try really hard to move information into the public, knowing or recognizing that not everyone in our neighborhood has access to the Internet or a computer, that they could look up stuff on our website. So, we heavily rely on EDM mailings, where we send postcards to all of the households in the zip codes surrounding our area. We have found that to be an effective way. We also utilize the Omaha Star for just about everything and engage in community conversations with our community partners along the North 24th Street corridor.
And then, what would you, your definition, what do you, what do you define as a good neighbor? What are some of the things, attributes and things like that, that you would define as being a good neighbor?
I think being open and accepting. I think creating a space where everyone feels welcome. I feel like the Union is a good neighbor in the fact that we are a cultural institution that provides services to a wide demographic, but we also feed our neighbors. I think being a good neighbor is not just addressing the need that you might be expected to address, but addressing the needs that exist within your community.
And then, lastly, how many jobs will this bring, both pre-construction and after construction? I've heard a good, good report so far. Just giving you an opportunity to sing that song.
So, in terms of, in terms of job creation, obviously through construction, we'll be, we have been working really hard to pull BIPOC subcontractors into the bidding process for the work. But post-construction, we will be adding at least two to three positions, full-time positions at the Union for Contemporary Art to staff the theater. But we also rely heavily on the time and talents of actors, crew members, all the beautiful people that go into creating a production. And so, since we started our theater program in 2016, we have to date invested about $100,000 in compensation for BIPOC artists, cast and crew members.
Thank you. And I just want to, again, recognize this attribute that will definitely be something that everyone can embrace and tell our stories from generations to come. I'm looking forward to this opportunity to see what will happen here very quickly, very soon, and I'm sure that everyone will be very happy with the results. I stand today and I move that we support this.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Seeing no other lights, there's a motion. There's a motion and a second roll call.
Row, vaguely.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, six to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve the South Omaha Spring Lake CRA generally bound by the area as described in Exhibit A.
The public hearing of vote is today on Agenda Item 20. Mr. Seaton.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This item asks you to designate a portion of the city as a community redevelopment area, CRA. We went through this not really too long ago with another one not too far from the current proposal. This map shows the kind of context for the city. All the lavender area is existing community redevelopment areas that have been designated, represents a little less than 20% of the city's land area. By state law, we can go up to a maximum of 35%. The area we are going to discuss today and look at is located in kind of this gap right down here, pretty well surrounded by existing CRA area, designated CRAs. We're looking at this census block group, Census Track 25, Block Group 2, and Census Block Group 3 of Census Track 25. So, it's these two here. Like I say, there's existing designated CRAs quite logically all the way around it. The location is just kind of east of the Henry Dorley Zoo, which is right in that area. And there's a little better depiction of the boundaries of Census Track 25, Block Group 2, and Block Group 3. Now, to be eligible under state law for designation as a community redevelopment area, the area needs to meet the definitions of blighted and substandard. Both items are, both words are defined in state law. You have a study in front of you and one that's been provided to the public that has the complete and lengthy, somewhat convoluted, actually, definitions of blighted and substandard from the state law. But really, if you want to put it in a nutshell, a community redevelopment area that is blighted and substandard is an area where the population is economically disadvantaged compared to the city as a whole and where the built environment, that'd be buildings and public infrastructure, both public and private, where the built environment is older, obsolete, substandard, and/or showing signs of deterioration. And that's kind of what we're talking about when we're talking about CRA. We're looking at an area where redevelopment activity has been slower or lagging, and by creating the CRA, that opens up the ability for people redeveloping in the area to apply for the TIF program, which will hopefully stimulate some redevelopment activity. In this case, we launched the study in response to a request from Charlie Sullivan. He's a developer who is interested in doing a redevelopment project in the area, and he feels that he's going to need the TIF program to make the project succeed. He is preparing to do a multifamily redevelopment project at 4206 South 13th Street, which is the Sokol Hall building site. Anyway, in terms of meeting the definitions of blight and substandard, we'll start perhaps with the word blight, and particularly part A of blighted. There are a total of five measurable criteria. If you meet one of them, you are, you are considered meeting the definition of the term blighted. Those five criteria include population change, per capita income, unemployment, average age of structures, and gee, has the property or land in the area been subdivided or platted, but has remained undeveloped for 40 years or so. You only need to meet one. In this case, the subject area, the study area, meets two of the criteria. The city's per capita income is a little over $33,000. The two block groups have a per capita income respectively for two and three of $29,000 and $17,000. A per capita income of $17,000 is quite a bit lower than the 33 citywide. In terms of age of structures, this area was largely developed by the turn of the century, by 1900. A lot of the buildings are from the 1890s. You only need to be greater than 40 years of age for median age of all structures in the area. This area readily exceeds that. In terms of the other word, the other definition that the area must meet, and that's substandard, we look at, well, we use two sources of data. We use windshield surveys and drive the area and take a look around at the condition of the buildings and the infrastructure. We also use the rating scale of building conditions that appears on the Douglas County Assessor's website. They use a hierarchy of building conditions to determine, you know, what's the taxable value of each property. And that hierarchy is very good, good, average, fair, poor, and worn out, going from best to worst. In the case of the study area, all of the buildings within the study area, if you look at just the ones below average, the fair, poor, and worn out, those three categories combined came to about 23.7% of the buildings in the area. That's a little high, not really bad for an area that's 120 years or more older. But anyway, that's the number, about 23.7% of the buildings are below average, which is significant. But perhaps even more significant is the condition of the infrastructure. A lot of the infrastructure is older. We have deteriorated pavements, streets with no sidewalks, poor connectivity, no outlet, again, no sidewalks. So, in many ways, when we look at the substandard and the conditions in the area, it's probably the infrastructure and the condition of the aging infrastructure that's more significant than the conditions of the buildings themselves. Anyway, the conclusion, looking at both definitions and at the data available to us, is that the area is eligible for CRA designation. We also looked into the criteria for extremely blighted area designation, and those criteria are that the unemployment needs to exceed 200% of the statewide rate. So, unemployment would need to exceed 6.68% in the area. It does not. The two census block groups have a unemployment rate that's actually around 1% or below. The second criteria for an extremely blighted area is the percent of people in poverty. Needs to be more than 20% of the population to be eligible for an EBA. In this case, the two block groups were at 13.0% and 10.4%. So, bottom line is that the area does qualify for, it does qualify for designation as a community redevelopment area. It does not qualify for an extremely blighted area designation. And with that, staff does recommend approval of the designation. I can put the map back up, I think.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Are there any proponents for Agenda Item 20? Seeing none, are there any oponents?
Donnie Johnson, Johnson de Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Foundation. The only thing I see here is that back in the mid-'70s, there was a young man who worked on the city council, and he was a great friend and a great mentor. His name was Mr. Mike Howard. And I will support this if they name one of the streets after him, because he and Senators Orenski sent me into France to study the concourse, which they rent and said we should look into international airport. He's never been given credit for this, and I thanked Mr. Mike Howard, and he took me to 125th and Pacific, and he said, "Donnie, it's not Mr. Peralmo. He made me study this wonderful program." So, when I got to France, I said, "You know, I'm glad he sent me here, but I don't never, I don't believe they ever gave him credit. So, if we're gonna go in this direction, if there's a street over there, if you can name it after him," to respond to what he wanted to do, him and Mr. Willie Thieson, when they rented the concourse, they sent me into Washington DC and to into France to study the concourse. And I told him this, "You're right. We do need an international airport."
Thank you. Are there any other oponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I will say, Mr. Seaton, thank you for that. I did attend the community meeting that the planning department had, which was well-attended. We had some various members. We had some various members of the community that have spent their whole life in that park. They're excited for what's going on. They've got their eyes open to make sure it happens in the right way. And certainly, moving forward, this is the way we do it. And I'll give you my word that I'll look into Mike Albert to see who that is. I apologize, I don't know, but we'll look and see what we can do. But we won't put his name on that street that we had on the photo earlier, so I promise you that. Public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, six to zero. Item 21, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the DR District with a weight vertice section 55-108 height to allow a 270-foot tall tower located at 11805 Military Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote is on Agenda Item 21 at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Anthony Amin, Amin Associates, 200 East Big Beaver Road, Troy, Michigan, 48083 appearing this afternoon on behalf of American Tower Delaware Corporation. I'm here this afternoon to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton.
Yes, sir, if you could come back up, and I apologize, said your name so fast, I didn't have a chance to write it down.
I apologize. Anthony Amin.
Okay.
I'm a nice guy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Amin.
Of course.
I was just curious, because we've had issues with this before. This is right outside the Deer Creek neighborhood. From the attachments, it looks like it's really close to the homes. What kind of communication have you had with the residents in the area?
I appeared before you, I think on August 24th of last year. We sent out, I think, close to 100 letters. We met the requirements. I'm not sure if someone is here from the planning commission. I dealt with them this past go-around for this permanent tower. By the way, you approved the temporary tower of 195 feet. That was necessitated by the Metropolitan, the Utilities District making us take the tower down. So we did send the letters for the temporary tower. The city sent those for this permanent tower. I think it's part of your attachment. I think there's probably close to 100 letters that were sent out.
100 letters?
Approximately.
But did you have any kind of community meeting or anything, or did you just send out notices?
We sent, again, for the temporary tower last time, we sent out the letters to them with...
Sir, I just, I meant for this one, because this is the 270-foot permanent tower, not a temporary.
I did not. Last time I handled it, I offered the residents a Zoom meeting. We waited approximately an hour, no one showed up.
Okay. Do you have any pictures of what this is actually going to look like?
I do not. It's a standard 270-foot self-support tower. It's three-legged, it's, you know, it's a standard cellular tower. I apologize, I don't have any pictures on me.
No, that's okay. I just, I mean, on behalf of the people, and I said, "Dear Cherry Ridge area", I just thought that they might want to see this. And I understand that it's across the street, and it's actually probably going to benefit the people in this neighborhood because it's going to provide them better coverage. I just, in the future, I would just like, just because you sent out notice for a temporary, I would really like notice to go out for the permanent.
Again, the city did send out the letters for the permanent tower.
Okay, but you didn't do any kind of meeting or anything else?
I did not, based upon the temporary tower, and then with the city sending out the letters for the permanent tower, we felt that that was sufficient.
Okay, and no one showed up for your, no one logged on for your Zoom call on the temporary?
That is correct.
Okay. And have you personally heard from anyone?
I have not.
Okay, and by the way, I haven't either. So typically, people will contact me, I can tell you that. I haven't heard anything. I just kind of wanted to make sure. We have had some issues before where maybe the towers weren't appropriately placed. But this one looks like it's across the street, and it really should benefit the neighborhood more than...
That is correct. I believe last time I appeared before you had the question, you were more concerned about the small cells, that sometimes they just appear on corners and...
Correct. Or in the middle of sidewalks.
Absolutely. This, good news, bad news, is a 270-foot macro tower that we really can't hide.
Thank you. No, I would much rather have this than one in front of somebody's house in the middle of the sidewalk. So thank you very much. I appreciate you answering my questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Sir, if I could ask you a question too. Do you, and he doesn't have his name and address again, does he? Do you have the coverage map of the site showing the variation by chance?
I do.
Probably something you showed at the planning board. Yeah, there you go. You'll have to help us out with this.
Okay. The biggest concern, I'm sorry. The biggest concern I think you have to focus on is this isn't a new tower. This is a replacement of a tower. American Tower that I'm representing had a cellphone tower approximately, I think it was .2 miles to the east. Metropolitan Utilities District told them they had to move it. They did offer this property, they're still the landlord, to this location. The challenge you have is if you took this tower down and did not let us replace it for approximately a one-mile circumference, you'd have zero coverage by AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, I believe Dish Wireless and New Carrier is going on it. You would just have a black hole. So again, this isn't a new tower, this is a relocation of one. Inasmuch as we're trying to make the coverage better with the new tower, you'd have zero coverage if we did not obtain permission today. So I want to make sure that's clear. It's not a new tower, it's a relocation. Having said that, the colors, sorry, the colors on the map, green is good, red is bad. Green shows the coverage that, you'll see the tower, the location right here. So a cellular network is a honeycomb grid. And if you take this tower and you move it too far north, too far south, too far east, too far west, you'll have holes in different areas. So in a mature system or a location like this is, you have a very limited amount of space where you can relocate the tower. So what we're trying to do is obviously we want green everywhere. But if you can see close by where that tower is, we're going to have great coverage for the residents, for all the carriers. And again, it's not just AT&amp;T's better. AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, they're all going to have better coverage to cover the residents and commuters in that area. Does that help? I'm not sure if I answered that.
That's what I wanted to see.
Okay.
Everybody likes their cellphones working, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Is there a motion? Okay, there's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson.
I'm going to say yes, contingent upon you do due...
Do contingent.
Contingent upon you reaching out and doing due diligence in notifying those residents of this change.
I guess if you'd qualify that, since the city sent the letters out, I'm not sure exactly what you'd like me to do.
Qualify what?
What exactly is the request?
The request is just to be a good neighbor and let those neighbors know that this tower is coming up.
Okay. I'd like to ask the city attorney if this is appropriate, because we're in the middle of a vote. I think it has to be a yes or no. I would ask the city attorney to weigh in as a point of order.
Mack Husey Law Department, and Ms. Butler can confirm this if I'm incorrect, but once voting has begun and the roll's been called after a motion has been made and seconded, once voting has begun, there can't be any further discussions other than a vote on the matter.
Then my answer would be no.
Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 22, a resolution to approve a major amendment to a special use permit to allow daycare services in an R4 district located at 4768 Q Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 22. Proponents, please.
Brian Ackert, 119 South 49th Avenue, project architect on the community center that would be located at 48th and Q Streets for Kids Can Community Center. We are requesting an amendment to a special use permit to allow signage within what's traditionally an R4 district for single-family residential. Doing a little bit more signage on the building to adhere to the community center aspect of it and is also finding, wayfinding around the corner to get to the main interest of the facility. I'm here to answer any other questions, too.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Okay. Before we go to roll call, I sit here today, so I can't motion anything, but we've had coffee shops that we're still finding the name of, residential housing, multi-residential housing. And now we have this daycare facility, which ultimately you're only moving a block to the east. And if you've driven by here anytime recently, it's a wow factor already, and you're not done. So I really appreciate the work. I would hope that my colleagues would vote with me today in approval of this. And it's a great facility, and it definitely fills a need in South Omaha. So, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, six to zero. Item 23, a resolution to approve a major amendment to a large project special use permit to allow meatpacking and related industries in the HI District located southwest of 33rd Street and Edward Babe Gomez Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on Agenda Item 23 begins at this time. Are there any proponents, please?
Hi, Trevor Vescrano with Thompson, Dreesen &amp; Dornar, 10836 Old Mill Road. I'm here representing the applicant Chase Galick. We're seeking your approval for a major amendment to the special use permit to allow a new employee parking lot in a new building cooler addition. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. There's a motion in a second. Trevor, I will say honestly, I thought you were coming down to give me that name, but you're not. So roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, six to zero. Item 24, to consider a Class I liquor license for Midtown Bar located at 330 North 30th Street.
Public hearing and vote is today on Agenda Item 24. And I believe we do have with us on Zoom, Adam Degas. Adam, if you're there.
Hi, yes, my name is Adam Degas from Four Points, Omaha Midtown, located at 330 North 30th Street.
Okay, thanks for being here, and you're just here to answer any questions if we have them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? Motion in a second? Oh, sorry about that. Adam, thanks for being a proponent. Are there any other proponents here in the audience? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, six to zero. Item 25, to consider a Class K catering liquor license for Blue Chip Ultra Lounge located at 14805 West Maple Road.
Public hearing and vote today on Agenda Item 25. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Sarah Innis with SEI Investments LLC, doing business as Blue Chip Ultra Lounge at 14805 West Maple Road. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 25 is approved, six to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on Agenda Items 26 through 28 were held on May 24th of 2022. Just motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearing, the public hearings on Agenda Items 29 through 41 and 45 through 49 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Yeah, we polled Agenda Items 42, 43, 44, and 50 off the agenda. Mr. Johnson, you're first. Come on up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Since this is baseball season, we're coming in too. And Mr. Rosenblack, he was one of my great mentors, and so is Mr. Mike Albert, Mayor Boyle, Zierinsky, Laye.
And your name and address.
Donnie R. Johnson, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, the North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation and 4928 North 52nd Street.
Thank you.
So I, thank you, sir. I looked at these in the project for the mayor, and I hope that we can get some of the minorities to get some of this construction work on, like number 30.
What agenda items, so we can follow along with you?
Number 30 and number, mainly the construction portions of the mayor program.
30 is a Bobcat purchase.
Yeah, that one, we, well, you can buy two or three, and we'll send them to North Omaha if you like, but that's okay. Because I know Mr. Willie Thieson and Mr. Mike Albert, one of my mentors.
Yeah, I believe they're being used for street maintenance. So what other item would you like to talk about?
Then we can talk about, let's see, parking revenue funds. Well, we won't go into, I don't want to object to anything the mayor is working on. I think she's doing a wonderful job, especially with the Lutheran building, or, excuse me, Mutual Omaha Building. I'm just trying to put some added to this portion that we maybe get a portion of these fees or these jobs that's coming forward. And since our summer program back in the '70s, Mayor Laye and Mr. Steve Rosenblack, he talked to me before he left. He said, "Make sure the city council and Mayor Boyle all get thanked for all the work they did for us kids back in the day." So you don't suppose that as we move forward, we can't cut into some of that College World Series money, can we?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on these agenda items? Okay, let me get to the bottom here. Hi, welcome.
I'm Spencer Goldberg. I'm with Oak Investment Real Estate, 3219 Leavenworth Street, is where we're located. I heard you say that you were going to take item 50 off the agenda?
Yes, we'll come to that right after this.
Okay, I was just making sure that we always discuss it.
Hang tight. Okay. Okay.
Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. This is where it gets real confusing, because you go so fast here. Some of us don't hear which items you're pulling, or remember which items you're pulling. I'm against 43, 44. Have those been polled?
They'll be after this.
48?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. Number 50?
50 is after this.
Okay, so right now, I want to comment on 48. This seems like it's tied to a topic that was discussed this morning at the county board meeting. So it makes me wonder, if this mental health center is getting money from both bodies? And why it has to be from both bodies? And why it has to be from both bodies? Because it does affect my taxes, which of course are going higher and higher in my property valuations, but I just don't believe it. But pennies on the dollar, I guess they say, it's not the valuation that counts, it's the mill levy. And then everybody says, well, that's not my mill levy, that's somebody else's mill levy. I don't set your taxes, I don't rise your taxes. But this has to raise my taxes by somebody. And in addition to this morning's granting for community mental health center, I, some of that stuff should have been done with ARPA. Everybody else was racing to get ARPA. Some of it's community, community grants, some of it's federal grants. It's not all really tied together for us. But here we're talking about 45, not to exceed $45,000. But it's a, it's a continuing thing. And I was under the impression that we had lots of facilities for detaining intoxicated individuals. But I guess not, we're moving that responsibility to the Douglas County Mental Health Center. I guess you could say alcoholism is a mental health problem. But you could also say that it's not, it's a disease. So, you know, maybe some clarification would be in order, so I'm against it until there is, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Or opponents? Seeing none? Okay, the public hearing, the public hearing is closed on agenda items 29 through 41 and 45 through 49, so next we'll take. Yeah. We have a motion in a second, roll call.
Row Bagley Harding Johnson Melton Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Agenda item 42.
Item 42, a resolution to approve the nomination of Simone D. Sanders Street as a commemorative street name on 22nd Street from Sprague Street to Sailor Street.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, I was hoping that I was hoping that Terry Sanders would hang around Simone's mom to kind of give us some comments, positive comments about Simone, but she's, it looks like she's gone. But I would like to say that Simone is, is a very good example of what youth and the potential a youth individual in any neighborhood, community, city that picks themselves up despite the diversities that they may have in a community such as North Omaha, that is, is in a underserved community. Simone, I remember Simone when she was an intern at a transportation company, I had a conversation with her, I said, Simone, are we talking about item number 42?
I was.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no problem. I remember I had a conversation with Simone when she was very early on, before she got into her political career, I said, and she was working as a communication representative as an intern. And I said, you know, what do you, what do you aspire to be? And she said, I don't know, she said, I, I just want to explore all the opportunities in the world. I just want to see what, what my options are and then land in a direction in which it's comfortable for me. I, I don't want anyone to define where I'm going to be in life. And I said, hmm. And years later, Simone became a part of the political platform. She became very astute, very outspoken, very uplifting, and she definitely makes a mark in Omaha, more importantly, in North Omaha. And so I said all of that to say that I am in full support of her recognition of having this street naming of Simone Sanders because I think this will definitely uplift young folks in our area, that they too can be something that the entire community can be proud of.
Thank you, councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I actually, I had the honor of serving with Simone on the, the last charter convention, so just about 10 years or so ago. And it was obvious way back then when, when the potential that, well, Ben Gray was the one who nominated her for, for the charter convention and saw her potential. I mean, she was focused, she was diligent, she sparked conversation about potential changes that we could add to the charter. And then we saw her meteoric rise through national politics, working on presidential campaigns for the vice president, and, and then to cable TV. So, quite, quite fitting honor for the commemorative street naming for.
Thank you for that. And the public hearing continues, are there any proponents on agenda item 42? Seeing none, are there any opponents on agenda item 42? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Oh, you did, you got a motion in a second? Go ahead and do it now.
I'll let Ms., Ms. Ms. Melton do that.
Move to approve, second.
There's a motion in a second, roll call.
Row Bagley Harding Johnson Melton Palermo.
Yes.
Item 42 is approved six to zero. Item 43, a resolution to approve an agreement with Family Housing Advisory Services, and the total amount is $75,000 for counseling services to individuals and for families who qualify for and who are participating in the city-sponsored loan programs.
Public hearing begins at this time, and vote for agenda item 43, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Pat Evans, I am with the City Planning Department, I'm the Community Development and Compliance Manager, available to answer any questions. Also, I have with me Teresa Hunter, who is the Executive Director of Family Housing Advisory Services, to also assist with any questions.
Appreciate it, thank you for being here, are there any other proponents for agenda item 43?
Hi, everyone, so I'm here to answer questions, but I just want to say that Family Housing Advisory Services does provide housing counseling services for people who are trying to get into some of the city-sponsored programs. We have been HUD certified since 1970, and we provide comprehensive housing counseling services. So, those are requirements, and so those are some of the things that we do. But in the process of helping people go through home ownership, we found that it's very necessary. Sometimes we think that's just a given for people, but sometimes those housing counseling services are very, very necessary. Especially when you have people that were underserved, or people who were traditionally denied the opportunity to become homeowners. So, this counseling helps people, and as they go through that housing counseling session and they get the homebuyer education, it helps people to find out how they might end up increasing their income, getting better jobs, just catapulting them to the next level to say, wow, I am much more productive than I was coming into this program. And so it's really good to be able to have your support for housing counseling services, and so we are looking for your support and we thank you for that. And I'll also say that not only do we do these services that you're funding, but we also help connect people to, whether it is fair housing services that they might need in the process of this, or if they need some match savings assistance, or if they need financial education, we help people put things in order, get rid of debt problems and credit problems and things like this. All of these services are offered free of charge to people who need them, so that we can make sure that they are ready to become a successful homeowner. Thank you, and we ask for your support.
Thank you, are there any other proponents? Terry, could you come back up and give your name and address for us, please, so the clerk can write it down?
I am so sorry, I am Teresa Hunter, and Family Housing Advisory Services is located at 2401 Lake Street, 68111.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
I am up again, name is Harry Urie of 1626 Lotwood Street, Omaha. I just want to say that the Family Housing Advisory Services has been a very useful and beneficial program in the community, as a historian that I am. I did know some of the original founders of the organization years ago. They included Charles Young, Connie Roundtree, and some others. And it's amazing that the program and the organization has grown extensively thus far. I also had worked with Family Housing Advisory Services under the auspices of Debbie Brockman at that thing, I think this was her name. But, and I also worked with the City of Omaha Planning Department, but I just encourage you to provide whatever support that's necessary for the augmentation of the Family Housing Advisory Services. Been a very good organization in the community, has benefited many people in the service of financial management, money management, mortgage development, and understanding of home ownership. So I do encourage you to continue to help increase the growth of the program, thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Pat Evans, City Planning Department, just as a wrap up for Family Housing Advisory Services, we have contracted with them for over 18 years to provide this service for us.
Pat, you already spoke once, so if somebody wants to call you up, you can continue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
Come on back up, Pat, somebody called you up.
Somebody called me.
Just got to keep up the rules here.
I'm sorry. Yes, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't know to add it at the beginning, in support of the program. We have contracted, like I said, for over 18 years with Family Housing Advisory Services to provide this particular service. This service is a HUD requirement for our home ownership program that we fund when we contract with various agencies, nonprofits, for-profits to build affordable housing. HUD requires that all homeowners receive HUD-certified training. There are two, only two agencies in the city right now that have HUD-certified trainers, and that is FAS and Credit Advisors. Over the years, nobody else has really applied to us for this service other than Credit Advisors. And so we consider this an essential service, we cannot provide home ownership assistance without this particular service, in the way that it is provided. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm not entirely completely opposed, but the way it reads makes me think that this is a special program for special people, and once again, a nonprofit. Perhaps our budgets are overspent and our taxes are too high because we have too many programs, and we have too many nonprofits. My wife says I ought to go get a job because we're having difficulty with our taxes and mortgages and everything. Maybe I should form a nonprofit of my own, make an application and spell it out as to how to fight your city council, your Douglas County Board, your state government for your rights, because there seems to be an awful lot of people getting things that some of us may not be. If we're all getting this, then we need to clarify that. But if we're not all getting that, I think you should explain yourself. I mean, doesn't the City of Omaha and Douglas County Board have qualified people to provide this as a service to the citizens without forming a nonprofit? But maybe the game is that if you, if you do it through a nonprofit, you're not held accountable. Is that the game, I don't know. So maybe that's what I'll do with my job search, and we might be seeing you quite often then, thank you.
Looking forward to it, might even apply for TIF. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Hey Teresa, do you mind coming up to the mic, please? Thank you, I took this item off the agenda because I think recognition that the services that your organization provides to the community is well worthy of some type of salute. You've done an excellent job in the community, you're definitely a beacon, not only you, but you and your staff. That provided incredible services as it relates to education, home ownership, the purchasing, and also providing information regarding rental assistance, credit, and all of the number of support mechanisms that your organization provides to Omaha, and more importantly, North Omaha. I really wanted to just pay that recognition to you, and I'm sure that with these funds, you will continue to do the incredible job that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I move that we approve.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Row Bagley Harding Johnson Melton Palermo.
Yes.
Item 43 is approved six to zero. Item 44, a resolution to approve an agreement with Omaha 100, and the total amount is $75,000 for the provision of private mortgage financing and city second mortgage underwriting services through the mortgage lending program.
The public hearing on 44 begins at this time, proponents?
Good afternoon, Pat Evans, Community Development and Compliance Manager, City Planning. Omaha 100, we have funded this activity that they provide underwriting services to the city second, which is the deferred payment loans or down payment assistance to our homebuyer program, for again, well over 18 years. They are considered an essential service. We have a financial package that goes through Omaha 100 that consists of providing a first mortgage, as well as qualifying for a city second. That city second is a no-interest loan, it does depreciate after 10 years, the remaining half stays on for remaining 10 years. So for a 20-year mortgage with no payment, the homebuyer is earning equity through that program. And Omaha 100 provides underwriting that meets our HUD regulated guidelines for qualification and eligibility, which is what makes them unique from other financial institutions that do underwriting but does not meet our HUD requirements. So, we have Melissa Williams here and Jerry Dansler from both, one Omaha 100, that can also can speak in, in support of this program, thank you.
Thank you, other proponents?
Teresa Hunter, Omaha 100 at 2401 North 24th Street, or Lake Street, I'm sorry, I don't know why I said that. So, again, I am in support of this, just because Omaha 100, again, they have outlined their program so that it does meet the standards that the city needs in order to, to help facilitate home ownership in these areas. And Omaha 100 is there for the community where some bank might say, okay, you just don't qualify, I'm sorry, and send a denial. Omaha 100 will work with the clients that it serves, and it works in tandem, too, with making too with making sure that people do have the education that they need in order to become a successful homeowner. So, working together, it's really making an impact on the people that are looking to have housing as a goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none. Opponents?
Donnie Johnson, the North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street, and the Johnson E. Question Foundation. I looked at this program, and I'm saying to myself, the United States Department of Agriculture under Senator Chuck Hagel and others, and we need them to be a part of the future of homeownership. But the only thing we run into is that the United States Department of Agriculture is in Fremont. So, all these programs that they had for my generation, for instance, sending me into Egypt and studying bridges, we can't benefit from them unless we can get access to revenue. So, we need for the city council to look at some of these programs that were provided in the past so we can start looking at these programs. And I've talked to the county commissioner before about this land acquisition problems. So somehow, some way, we're gonna have to come and bring, as Senator Fisher and I have discussed, the USDA into the City of Omaha programs. Because these programs, I think she's doing a wonderful job, because my mom benefited from her program. But those programs are not for my generation as much as they are for us baby boomers who are aging out, and we are looking at going back into farming. So, as we look at my last project that I'm working on, and they asked me at the federal level, as I work with other members of this council, Mr. Sabi Anzado, as they were some of my sponsors, and Senator Chambers, they said, one of the things you guys might want to consider in the future is moving some of the baby boomers out in the outskirts of the community, and we need USDA to be a part of that. And we need also the same program that I went through in 1977 under President Carter and the Small Business Administration. So, if we can look at that, that would be very helpful for us baby boomers who are aging out of their workforce and looking at other opportunities to provide a second income. So if we could think about that or look at that, my age group, they're not sending out of the country no more because they say every time I leave the country, I put too much on my American Express for the United States, and that ain't what they want. They want the young folks to participate. So can you folks really look at North Omaha, some of the problems we're facing, and look in that direction? And I'll tell you about Mr. Mike Albro, and the last one, sir, is that Central Park Drugstore back in 1966, and the Biddles in North Omaha, Sadya Bakery, they took and sold all their businesses. I was only in the fifth grade and moved all their investments to Las Vegas. And I said, look, I can't go, because my job was to bodyguard some of those rich kids in high school, or excuse me, elementary school, while I was studying Albert Einstein and that other fellow, that one that was making all the mothers. Okay. You have a wonderful day, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Other opponents, please.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I guess I won't form a nonprofit because I'd be duplicating what Donnie's doing, and I don't think that's allowable under the tax laws. But anyway, I'm against it because I'm looking at two items here that seem to be kind of related. $75,000 here, $75,000 there. And it mentions city participation, sort of like TIF, city programs, city private or city second mortgage program. And I'm wondering, is Omaha Land Bank involved in this? I didn't know that we were involved in real estate and land banking and mortgaging. And if so, why? Because there are other people that do that. And I shouldn't be paying for that kind of a service in my tax dollars. So I'm against it until it gets clarified. $75 here, $75 there, same people. If our experts in the city finance department can't do these things, maybe they should be tutored to do it so we can get more for our money out of the people we already hired, instead of another nonprofit for this and another nonprofit for that. We could really cut our budgets and make the housing more affordable by not raising the cost of the housing. And it maybe attract more people that would stay here and pay taxes longer instead of moving. Density going this way, I suppose a renter pays property tax one way or another, but you don't see it on the rolls. They don't get it in the mail from you, and they don't have to come down and protest it. I do. What chance do I have of protesting? Not much. Because the protest referees are knowledgeable real estate people, and they're connected to the assessors department. Not really fair, is it?
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'm not going to call the individuals up for Omaha 100, although I would really like to. But I do want to give hats off to Mr. Dansler and his staff, and again, to Family Housing and Advisory Services for doing an incredible job in the community in terms of helping provide homes for families. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move that this is approved. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 44 is approved, six to zero. Item 50, a resolution to approve a real estate purchase agreement with Omaha Opportunities Industrialization Center, Inc. for the sale of the property known as 2415 Corby Street.
Public hearing on agenda item 50. Proponents, please.
Spencer Goldenberg with Oak Investment Real Estate. I'm just here to answer any questions, if there are any for this deal.
Okay. Give us your address, and we'll let you know if we have any.
Thank you.
Spencer, do you have your address for the record? Thank you.
3219 Leavenworth Street, 68015.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Spencer. If you could.
Well, don't go far, Spencer. Are there any other proponents?
I'll stand here.
Seeing none. Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. I couldn't quite hear what you explained to me, but I have to be opposed to this also because right here raises the question that I raise or that comes in my mind when I read these things. I don't have time to talk to each one of you to get better explanations of them, but when I read them, as with most citizens, it implies, oh, the City of Omaha is involved in real estate purchase transactions, real estate sale transactions. Why? We have private citizens that are supposed to do that. If we bought the property from Omaha Opportunities Industrialization Center, or we gave it to them in the past, or sold it to them in the past, we're buying it back or selling it back, why are we doing it? Why shouldn't a real estate company be doing it? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Spencer, if you don't mind, can you give us a quick summary of what we can expect to see here at the old OIC?
Yes. We're still working through some things, but it's a mixed-use development that's gonna have apartments, townhomes, some commercial, and some community space. Just high level. That's what it's gonna be. Should be very nice.
All right. I just want to recognize the fact that Bud Crawford, for our audience, is taking on this investment to bring back life into that area. The OIC building is such a historical... has played a historical significance to that community, and definitely, now that it's going to be renovated and a new spark of growth and hope and opportunities for those in that area, just want to make sure that I recognize that this is a huge undertaking and definitely something that is very much needed to the community, and want to praise you for that ability to see the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you for your time, and I move that we go ahead and approve this.
Thank you.
Before we get to the motion and the second, Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
That's all right. I had my light on. I just wanted to know, can anybody tell me what... Is this the appraised price, or did we reach an agreement for the property? Does anyone know? Oh.
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. The purchase price is the price that was in the appraisal that the city received for the property.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that, Jennifer. That's just what I wanted to know. For the objectors, we're selling the property, so it's benefiting the taxpayers of Omaha, and we sold it for an appraised price. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Item 50 is approved, six to zero. Item 51, in ordinance to accept the bid from General Fire and Safety for fire alarm system testing services for facilities management at a cost not to exceed $42,450 per year.
The public hearing is today on agenda item 51. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 52, in ordinance to approve an agreement with E-Builder, Inc. for a cloud-based project management solution for the Public Works Department.
Public hearing is today on agenda item number 52. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Item 53, in ordinance to change a street name in the Grove addition to change a portion of Leavenworth Street to Jones Street.
Public hearing today on agenda item 53. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Item 54, in ordinance to approve a lease agreement with Midtown Crossing at Turner Park for OCVB administrative offices to be located at 120 South 31st Avenue, Suite A, in an amount not to exceed $718,251.34.
The public hearing is today on agenda item 54. Deb Ward, please.
Save the best for last, right?
Absolutely.
Deborah Ward, Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, 306 South 10th Street. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the project. I get to use a little light today, huh? Is that okay? Oops. Where'd it go?
There it goes.
There it is. Okay. So the building is on the north side of Turner Park, so you kind of get an idea of Turner Park. That's the building. They're converting all of this restaurant space into office space. And we are gonna be on the northwest corner right there. And you can see by the floor plan, there are currently six spaces, and we will be tenant A. If you're familiar with Cantina Laredo, it's a portion of their space. It does not smell like guacamole and tacos anymore, unfortunately. It's a seven-year, three-month lease. The first three months are free. East Campus Realty has agreed to pay for the entire build-out, which is estimated at about $300,000. I think they feel like we're valuable and a stable tenant. We feel this location provides us with easy accessibility for our tourism partners and clients. They can pull right up, park on the street or in the garage. We have the ability to validate three hours of parking in the garage. It also provides us a great location to easily meet with clients, a vibrant first stop when we're selling the city. Think of it as a sales office for our city with a wonderful, beautiful front lawn. The open concept, and I'll pull up what we have so far, open concept provides us a lot of flexibility. We're planning to have several traditional offices, traditional cubes, but also some smaller Zoom offices, different types of plug-and-go stations with the goal of offering our staff a variety of workspace options. The location also allows us to increase our visibility for our organization. We'll be able to put our branding on at least two sides of the building, which will be visible to Midtown Crossing visitors, especially when there are large events in the park. And in closing, this location is for our administrative offices. We will continue to operate the Omaha Visitor Center at 10th and Farnham. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Oh, he changed his mind. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Deb, a couple of quick questions, please.
Deborah Ward, Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, 306 South 10th.
Good afternoon. Thanks for... We had a nice chat in my office this morning. In the last year, we've had conversations. And as a marketing person for the city, you hit all your themes in my office this morning, as you did here now. Can you briefly talk about the time you spent looking for a location and the approximate number that you looked at before you concluded to go here?
We probably have spent over a year looking at locations at about 10 different locations.
And the cost that we're paying here for this location in Midtown, how does that compare to where you were before?
The lease is seven years, three months. We will start with about $6,200 a month for the first year, and it goes up by $500 a year. In contrast to our old location, I believe we were paying $12,558 a month. So significant cost savings to us.
I appreciate your effort in that. And somebody, again, that with your expertise and communication, that's a beautiful venue there in Midtown, and with the potential of mutual, if all these things fall into place, if mutual moves downtown, the street car, you got the orbit line there on Dodge. So, it definitely checks all the boxes. And I really do appreciate your efforts and your great communication that you've done throughout this and saving taxpayers money. And as you said, the parking, they can park in the garage area and also on the street. And I think you got a neat little fire pit in there that's left.
Yeah, we inherit an accordion glass wall and the fire pit. We inherit that.
That's good.
From Cantina Laredo. So, yeah. Come over and bring your own tacos.
That's fair enough. Thanks again for your work on this today. And again, that's a great spot in Midtown that'll be anchoring the face of Omaha, and you got a beautiful view when you look out over the green horizon in downtown. I don't think you can find a better spot for the next few years for you, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. I would add too, Deb, obviously with the possibility of a new skyscraper, the possibility of the new street car, we certainly, as the City of Omaha, look for these opportunities to show that we're here to stay, and we're gonna not let these areas that may be transitioned from to new areas fail. And it certainly shows that with this commitment to be there for OCVB, because we know, as tourism goes, so does the City of Omaha. So, best of luck to you, Councilman Bagley, and other jewel in your district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 55 through 89, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:08. Meeting is adjourned at four oh eight.